We'll call this meeting of Lima City Council to order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Councilor Lowe, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
All heads bow. Dear Lord, we thank you once again for the great opportunity in the works of you for this great city of Lima, Ohio. Lord, we ask that you continue to wrap your hands around the leaders of this community, the residents, and anyone looking forward to moving into the city of Lima. Lord, we ask you to continue to bless our mayor, touch him, anoint him, that he can continue to lead us. We ask that you touch our president, and he's constantly here. Lord, we also ask that you continue to bless this city. Lord, we see that the rates are down, and that's letting us know that hearts are being touched, and people are trying to do the right thing. So we ask that you continue to bless us and lead us in the right direction. In the first hand, we pray amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon?
Here.
Mr. McLean?
Here.
Mr. Lowe?
Here.
Mr. Tevin?
Here.
Ms. Adams?
Here.
Mr. Glenn?
Here.
Mrs. Miles?
Here.
And Mr. Nixon?
Here. Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I'd like to add ordinance 199-15 to our agenda for community development.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to amend tonight's agenda by adding ordinance 199-15. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Under approval to the floor, we have Douglas Plogger regarding a claim. It's Mr. Plogger here. Second call is Mr. Plogger in the audience. Third and final call is Mr. Plogger in the audience. We will move on to the consent calendar.
Mr. President?
Mr. Tevin?
I move that item A of the consent calendar be received, filed, and approved, and items B, C, D, E, and F be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve item A, and to receive and file items B, C, D, E, and F. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for budget amendment.
Mr. President?
Mr. Tevin?
I move that communication number one be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Going to depart for a second. Mr. Cleaves, was that Mr. Plogger by any chance? Did they leave, or he leave? Okay, thank you. Communication number two.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Harson &amp; Associates.
Mr. President?
Mr. Glenn?
I move that communication number two receive and file legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number three.
From the Director of Utilities regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Davy Resource Group.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that communication number three be received and filed. Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number three. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Lowe?
Yes, Gary's not here. If, I'd put Mike on the spot, but, Mr. Caprada, I just got a real quick question. We see a lot of bids come to us quite often. How did we miss a bid by over $400,000? So the people at home will know what's going on.
This bid, this is the second bid. The first bid was for phase one. This is for the next phase of the work. So we didn't really miss the bid. What was really missed on here was the total price of the project, because it was really looked at more as an engineering type work where trees were just going to be cut down, new trees. But we'll get into the more of the detail. All the invasive species have to be wiped out all along the banks, all the way through. We're obligated for 26 years to keep this done and habitable and with the right kind of trees. So, I mean, this is just the next phase of the project. So it wasn't missed on there, because this last bid was like a, we had three bidders, and this is the lowest bid for this phase of the work.
And this will start as soon as possible?
Soon as possible. That's why we want to get it passed tonight, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number four.
From the Director of Utilities regarding legislation to enter into a contract with MWH Global.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that communication number four be received and filed. Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Auditor regarding the contract labor recourse.
Mr. President?
Mr. Lowe?
I move that communication number five be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding the new license to Calhoun at 113 East Spring Street.
Mr. President?
Mr. Lowe?
I move that communication number six be received and filed. The clerk authorize to file with no objections with the Ohio Division of Liquor Control.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number six and to authorize the clerk to notify the Ohio Division of Liquor Control with no objections. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments.
Mr. President?
Mr. Glenn?
I move that communication number seven receive and file legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number eight.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to dispose of city surplus on GovDeals.com.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that communication number eight be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number nine.
From the City Engineer regarding legislation to enter into a contract with American Structure Point Inc.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that communication number nine be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 10.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to sell the old field lighting assemblies from Simmons Field.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that communication number 10 be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 10. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I'd like to ask Mr. Elstro, how many assemblies are we talking? Or maybe Rick?
Probably about 25, potentially.
Usable, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 11.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to receive a gift from Potash Corporation.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that communication number 11 be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 11. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 12.
From the Deputy Director of Public Works requesting legislation to enter into a contract for bulk fuel purchases.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that communication number 12 be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 12. Is there any discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's not on tonight's agenda. Yeah, let me amend my motion.
Evidently, the law director's not as quick as we thought he was.
I thought he was over there sleeping. John did that, yeah. Right hand man.
Yeah, I'd like to amend my motion.
Just restate your motion.
Yeah. I move that communication number 12 be received and filed, and the law director be authorized to prepare the necessary legislation.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 12 and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 13.
From the City Engineer regarding legislation for construction of sidewalks.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that communication number 13 be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 13. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Communication number 14.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to solicit bids to purchase a vehicle.
Mr. President?
Mr. Glenn?
I move that communication number 14 receive and file. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 14. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Petitions.
Rezoning at 1,000, 1,008, 1,012, 1,014, 1,028, and 1,034 West Market. Petition for by Shannon and Andy Wannamaker et al.
Mr. President?
Mr. Tevin?
I move that the petition be received and filed. The law director prepare the necessary legislation, that the clerk cause publication of the legal ad, and notify abutting property owners of the public hearing to be held on November 9th, 2015, at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Thank you. The motion, the second, is to receive and file the petition as stated, to authorize legislation, to authorize the clerk to cause publication, and notify the abutting property owners of a public hearing to be held on November 9th, 7:00 PM. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Petition number two.
A rezoning at 1020 West North Street. Petition for by Jason Horowitz.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Miles?
I move that the petition be received and filed, and that the law director prepare the necessary legislation, that the clerk cause publication of the legal ad, and notify abutting property owners of the public hearing to be held November 9th, 2015, at 7:00 PM.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file petition number two and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation, to have the clerk cause publication of the legal ad, and to notify the abutting property owners of the public hearing to be held on November 9th, at 7:00 PM. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Petition number three.
An alley vacation in the 1,000 block of West North Street. Petition for by Jason Horowitz.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Miles?
I move that this petition be received and filed, that the law director prepare necessary legislation, that the clerk cause publication of the legal ad, and notify abutting property owners of the public hearing to be held November 9th, 2015, at 7:00 PM.
Second. Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file petition number three, to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation, to authorize the clerk to cause publication of the legal ad, and to notify abutting property owners of the public hearing to be held on November 9th, 2015, at 7:00 PM. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Resolution 715.
Declaring the necessity of constructing certain designated sidewalks and requiring that the abutting property owners construct the same.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that resolution number 07-50 be adopted on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to adopt Resolution 715 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Resolution 715 has been adopted on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 189-15.
Amending the 2015 annual budget.
Mr. President?
Mr. Tevin?
I move that ordinance 189-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 189-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Ordinance 189-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 190-15.
Loving special assessments for property maintenance code charges on premises in the city of Lima.
Mr. President?
Mr. Glenn?
I move that 190-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 190-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Ordinance 190-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 191-15.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Allen Water District and Chemtray Logistics, Inc.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that ordinance 191-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 191-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Ordinance 191-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 192-15.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Davy Resource Group.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that ordinance 192-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 192-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Ordinance 192-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 193-15.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with MWH Global.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that 193, ordinance 193-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 193-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Ordinance 193-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 194-15.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with GovDeals.com to auction Public Works Department vehicles and equipment.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance 194-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 194-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Ordinance 194-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 195-15.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with American Structure Point Inc.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance number 195-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 195-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Ordinance 195-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 196-15.
Authorizing the mayor to sell used field lighting assemblies taken out of service from Simmons Field.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance number 196-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 196-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Ordinance 196-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 197-15.
Authorizing the mayor to accept a donation from Potash Corporation.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance 197-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 197-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
My confusion came because I highlighted Simmons Field, and I'm like, we just did the light assembly. So I'm like, is this a?
You got it wrong.
My apologies.
At least you have an explanation for your confusion.
Yeah. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
And Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Ordinance 197-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 198-15.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Harson &amp; Associates.
Mr. Glenn?
Oh, it's me. Wow. Okay, okay, okay. Mr. President?
Mr. Glenn?
I move that 198-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 198-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
And Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Ordinance 198-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 199-15.
Authorizing mayor to advertise for bids and enter into a contract to purchase a vehicle with the property maintenance code enforcement program.
Mr. President?
Mr. Glenn?
I move that ordinance 199-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 199-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Ordinance 199-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Next is miscellaneous business. Mr. Lowe?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess this question would go to Mr. Elstro. Tonight, we passed the resolution 715. And I guess I got a little bit of confusion here. CSX Transportation ain't... Do we have no jurisdiction over railroad tracks? How do we have jurisdiction over the... Making sure that they take care of their sidewalks? Or are we just asking them to?
Mr. Elstro?
The... It's a good question, Mr. Lowe. In this case, CSX owns property that fronts to the street. I'm looking down here, in the 400 block of Northwest. So, in this case, they are a... treated just like any other property owner. They are required to maintain their sidewalk in front of their property. So, by the Ohio Revised Code, we can make sure that they take care of their sidewalks just as we can any other property owner. This is not necessarily the area... It's not the same as track maintenance at a crossing. It's a different Revised Code section.
Okay.
I understand that the tracks are going under federal law. The sidewalks are mine.
Okay, thank you. One more thing I had. Oh, and my other request would be to Mr. Bartels. We passed a couple of things tonight on government deals. Is there a way that you can give us a list of how that is helping us? And how much we've been able to generate from it? Thank you very much. Now, that's it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Mr. Tevin?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to remind everyone, Hope Neighborhood Association will be meeting a week from this Tuesday, October 6th, at 6:30 PM at Unity Elementary School. And I hope everyone can attend. My other announcement is Lacknip is hosting the Lima City Council President Candidate Forum. It's a interactive forum for all residents of the community to hear the views and ask questions of the candidates. It'll be held Thursday, October 1st, at 7:00 PM, and will go till 8:30. And it's being held at St. Luke's Lutheran Church at 209 West North Street. The event contact people are Bob Freeman and John Snyder through Lacknip. But you're welcome to just come at a little before 7:00. If you have any questions, you're asked to write them down, and then the moderator will ask the candidates what has been submitted there that evening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Glenn?
Yeah, thank you there. First of all, I want to bring up that Hoover Park Neighborhood Association will be coming back. And we appreciate all the work everyone did out there to get that Neighborhood Association restored again, because we really needed it. And all the good folks out there, they got enough people now to start it back up again. We're gonna have Mark the King Neighborhood and Southside Neighborhood will be assisting them through the transition to help them out with everything and show what they need to get done there. But it's very exciting to have them back. We had an opportunity to do our survey about the Rule of Ten and also about the Pass Fail. And first, I want to thank the folks who helped out. Mark the King Neighborhood Association, Southside, N W A C P Vice President, Mr. Smith, Lima News Internet Service, Ms. Davis, Hosted Area Churches. We had people at Save-A-Lot and some people at Walmart's. It's came up to 525 surveys. And I really appreciate all the folks that took part in it. And, like I said before, these are some of the things I like to do to make sure we get our community involved in it. And if anybody want to have opportunity to see them, this we get for 525. So, it was a lot of work there. And we made sure that we got everything there. We even added some work to it just to fill out the sheet there. Like the citizens have been given opportunity to voice their opinion about civil service. And 42% say yes. We had an opinion about the city governor advertised well or no. 48% say yes. And really, we really went to all the yeses. We didn't worry about the no's there. We make sure we had the yeses there. And we had, for the Rule of Ten, we had 22% say yes. And we had Pass Fail concept, 74% say yes to that. So, we want to make sure that we get it out there and let people know what's going on. And work on bringing jobs here. And we cannot make the decision. It's got to be up to the Civil Service Board to make any change on that. So, I wanted people to make sure they understand that. It's not that we have the power to do that. We have a charter that principally go through them to make this decision on that. So, I don't want to mislead nobody thinking that it's going to happen right away. But I just want to see what the views of people in my neighborhood, not just the Six Ward, we went all around. Because we had people from all over signing these petitions in the city of Lima. So, I want to make sure that they understand what was going on. And I want to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to send this to the Civil Service Board to adopt this rule, Pass Fail, to consider all job application who... All job applications who pass a fail on the civil service test. That's how I made a motion? Are we reading off again for you?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to send this survey, send this survey to the Civil Service Board to adopt the rule, Pass Fail, to consider all job... to consider all job application who pass the civil service exam.
Okay, that's your motion? Is there a second?
Is there... is it to send the results?
Send the results, yes.
To send the results for consideration?
Yep.
All right. Second.
Second. Motion second is to send the results of Mr. Glenn's survey to the Civil Service Board for consideration. In the... Consider... To require consideration of all applicants who pass the civil service test.
Got it.
For employment.
Yep.
That's the motion. All those in favor of the motion?
We're gonna have discussion.
Is there any discussion?
Well, I have a question. And I have no problem sending this to the Civil Service Board. The ultimate decision does rest with council, correct?
He's trying to forget.
Ultimately, yes. Let Mr. Geiger kind of explain it.
Mr. President, councilors, under the charter, the board is charged with the responsibility of adopting the rule, but it has to be approved by council.
So, the ultimate decision is council. If council disagreed with it, it would not become the rule. If council agreed with it, it would become the...
Correct. It has to originate from the board, however. Council cannot unilaterally adopt a ruling.
Okay, I'm fine.
We can't initiate that rule change. We can only recommend or otherwise talk to them. They have to initiate the rule change. We have the final...
We have the final vote on it.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe?
We've went rounds and rounds with this. Really kind of shocked that this is being brought up tonight. The committee agreed to go forward with the Rule of Ten. Mr. Glenn was not present. The other thing is, Civil Service also agreed to stay with the Rule of Ten. It's not the system. It's the individuals who have the final say in hiring. Okay? We've went over this a thousand times. Our mayor has already said that he wasn't going to support it. We're in a situation right now where we have an individual that is going through some illness. But we have been on top of this. I have been in constant communication with them. If a survey was taking place, I pray that everybody got all the information and not some of the information. Individuals perish because of lack of knowledge. You need to know everything before you put something out like that. That's where I stand. I'm going to continue to stand. I'm glad that we came to an agreement. Right now, it was asked that Civil Service, from our law director, was asked that Civil Service would come up with a draft and submit it back. They do have a meeting this Thursday. Okay? I don't want us making haste decisions. And that's it. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor?
As I think everyone knows, I continue to advocate for a rule that would allow us to consider everyone who passes the civil service test. It... the survey that Mr. Glenn has done was his idea, carried out with his initiative, and obviously reached hundreds of people who, by a very large margin, supported the idea. Now, I think it's a good idea that you adopt a resolution encouraging this information to be shared with the Civil Service Board and encouraging them to adopt such a rule. This is not about any... we need both. We need both the ability to consider every candidate and we need to marry that with, as we are, with aggressive outreach to this community. Anything less than that is not going to solve this hiring problem. Anything less than that is not going to get us to a workforce that reflects our community. And we need council's support in that. We need the Civil Service Board's support in that.
Thank you. I'm going to support sharing the information and sending the survey. I'm going to support Mr. Glenn's motion to send the results of the survey to the Civil Service Board. Frankly, I was surprised at the results and at how many had taken the... Taken the time to fill out the response. I don't think that it is bad information. I think it actually would be irresponsible for us to not share that with them in a formal fashion. Again, the decision to offer a rule change rests with the Civil Service Board. And then it would come to council for approval or not. But I think that simply not giving the information to them would be unfair. So, I'm going to support the motion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Tevin?
A couple other comments. I appreciate the fact, Mr. Glenn, that you did the work to gather this data. I think we would be foolish not to share it with the Civil Service Board. And I'm sure that they will take it into consideration. My personal hope is that it comes back, because I will agree with an item the mayor brought up. And I've thought this all along on this issue. I've heard Mr. Lowe say that we need better recruitment. That the Rule of Ten is fine, but I do think we need both. I think that it gives us the best shot at hiring the best people. Any private business that has a hiring process doesn't do it without interviewing people. And they combine test scores and interviews. And I think that if the Civil Service Board does make this change, we are going to have a better shot at reaching our goals relative to the demographics of our workforce matching our community, reflecting our community. So, I support it. And I do, very appreciate the fact that you pulled this together and got as many responses as you did. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Lowe?
Mr. President, I do not mind if these surveys are given to the Civil Service Board. My point is this, and I'm going to stand on it. We keep talking about widening the pool, widening the pool. When individuals come and take this test, those that want that job, they study a little bit harder and a little bit stronger. I really take offense to this perception that if you score 70, you're okay, and we're going to interview you. There's people that have been minorities that have scored extremely high on this test, and they still didn't get the job. Now, if we're going to put it out there, let's put it out there. There's people that pass that test, get into the final interviews, and they still don't get the job. It's not that minorities aren't passing the test. It's not that minorities aren't showing up. On that survey, I hope there's a question on there to ask them, have you ever taken the civil service test before? Because anybody can say what they want to say if they don't have the full knowledge. We don't know if those are test takers, past test takers, future test takers. We don't know. Okay? That's why I want to see them submitted. And I hope that question is on that survey. But at the end of the day, there's plenty of smart, intelligent, well-to-do minorities. Don't come talking about, we're going to go from 70 to 100, and consider them. And they could score 99, and you still don't hire them. Or they can have residency, and you still don't hire them. And the other thing I want to do is this. Make sure that you understand the proper definition of a minority. Because every time we discuss this, everybody wants to run with white and black. And that's not the case. Okay? Please, please, please. And I've said it in many meetings before. I want the best individual on the job, purple, black, green, turquoise, yellow. I want the best person on the job. And there's plenty of minorities that were the best person for the job, and they didn't get it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you. And also, we are... I've got one more other thing there. We're having our first annual Stop the Heron Walk. And we're going to have this at the Dr. Mark the King Park, October 24th, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And it's been really great. We had an opportunity to talk about it on TV. And we had a young lady, Jessie Boss, passed away off a heron. And her family wanted something to do about it. And right now, we had over 300 responses right now. They come from... matter of fact, we have people from Florida. They put it on the internet. They put it on Facebook. And people from Florida asking to send them shirts, and they send them play sheets, and they're going to send money, Dayton, Cincinnati. And it just... I mean, it's just very surprising that we have so many people respond to this. So, we hoping to see some people come out to walk on this. It'll be very great. We've got some good organizers putting it together. And they're going to make sure that we give you a lunch while you're there, you participate in the walk. And all the play sheets got to be in by October 15th, so we can have your shirt ready to go. And we just have you need to want to start walking at 6 o'clock in the morning, we're ready for you guys. Be there. We'll have somebody there to start you at 6:00 in the morning. But that day, we're going to have... That night, they're going to have a candlelight service for her at the Mark the King Park. And then that Sunday, they will be having a token run for to raise money to continue to educate folks on about this heroin. And we'll be working with kids and talking to kids about it and that. But I appreciate that. And that's about it. But I have to say one thing there. And when I did this survey, Mr. Lowe, I made sure, I think I'm very educated enough to let folks know about what it's about, this Rule of Ten. You know, it's very simple. It's not hard to understand what's going on there. And I don't have to mislead any folks about this. I think we got enough educated folks to know what's going on there. And at the time, I didn't make it to the meeting. My father, I got real sick. And he still is sick, so let's keep him in prayer there. So, I want to let you know that, because I don't have to mislead none of my folks in my ward, none of the people around here. They understand. And I've been around for a long time, so, you know, and don't need to do none of that. I did a survey. This is not the first survey I ever did because of this. I thought, before I make any decision, I like to take it to the folks. That's the only reason I did it, you know? Because this is a touchy thing, and a lot of things there. And this is not for... it's for everybody in the city. Black and white sign this, and Mexicans. Everybody signed it. I just didn't hand this to the black peoples only. So, we made sure of that. And they did the result, and the folks that took it around to work with these things made it happen. So, I want to make sure that we understand that, that I do not have to mislead anyone, you know? Because I've got... my decision will be made when I'm ready to make the decision, but I want to take to the folks to let them know what they want. I know what Rule of Ten mean. I know what Pass Fail mean. So, if I couldn't explain that to the folks, I didn't need to be a city councilman. So, and a lot of them folks knew about it, what Rule of Ten mean and Pass Fail mean, you know? They already been watching. You put the work out there for them. When you had committee meetings, they read the newspaper. They knew what was going on there too. So, no one had to be misled because, you know, because we did a survey on about how we can bring jobs. These are good jobs. These are jobs that we have retirement pensions, and a lot of jobs running with just 401K. And they don't have retirement benefits. So, this is very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Mrs. Miles?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Latham Avenue construction has come along pretty good. It's been a slow process, but I've had many residents who are asking me how it come along, when it's going to end, especially those on in the surrounding side streets. Because the traffic that normally will go down Latham Avenue will have to divert and go on the side streets. And they've seen a lot of increased traffic. And I think they've kind of gotten to the point that they're getting a little tired over here. So, I asked Howard to come up and give us an update on the Latham Avenue construction.
Mr. Elstro, before you start, Mrs. Miles, can I also kind of piggyback on the same thing while he's up here? Could you also give us an update on Kibbe Street, please?
Yes.
After you do the Latham Avenue.
Yes, Mr. President, council. First with Latham Avenue. If anybody's been down the street lately, we are nearly finished. What has happened... and let me go back and describe the project for people who may not be familiar with it. This was a curb with roadside swale project funded with our stormwater funds. It started at Nixon and went to a point a little bit east of Cole Street. Now that the project is finished, there are curbs along this street. There are 25 foot... there are breaks every 25 foot in those curbs, so that water will roll off of the street and into a grass surface. The idea is that this will capture the stormwater. The swale, the grassy swale, will cleanse the water. It will improve drainage for this neighborhood. It will improve water quality that eventually will discharge to Doug Run and ultimately the river. And it increases the capacity of stormwater runoff so that residents will be plagued with less flooding going forward. Now, this is not a street reconstruction project. The current street has not changed profile. However, as I say that, that is the one bit of work that is yet to be completed. And that is with our annual paving project, Latham Avenue will be planed an inch and a half, and then two inches of asphalt will be put back, and then that will be the finalized project. So, we are very, very close. I want to extend my appreciation to the neighbors in that neighborhood, in that area. They have had a really tough time. That street is narrow. And trying to get in and out of their driveways during construction and trying to work around that construction all summer has not been a picnic. Want to also say thank you for the adjacent neighborhoods. As Mrs. Miles pointed out this afternoon, when we do one of these large projects, traffic is diverted, and they often travel one or two streets over, which means additional vehicular traffic for their neighborhoods. And the good news is, this is almost to an end. Our paving program, we did your action last week, enabled us to finalize the contract. The contract is now going back to Bluffton Paving. And we expect a paving schedule very soon. Once we receive that, we will publish that. The deadline for the paving program is October 30th. So, that is the final date that Latham Avenue would be paved. I suspect it will be earlier than that October 30th. But if we get a little bit of rain, we should see the grass sprout in that swale. There's also a little bit of detail work to be done. There's some black tiles sticking out of those swales. We're not going to cut those down to the surface until it rains a couple times, because that swale, that loose dirt, will settle a little bit. On to Kibbe Street. By the way, the project of Latham Avenue, it was about $500,000 of improvements during... in that stretch. The largest construction project we have this year is Kibbe Street. It is a reconstruction project, which means not only is that stretch of Kibbe from Pine to Bell Fountain getting new curbs, gutters, and sidewalks and tree lawn, but we are also cutting down the profile of the street, which means we are removing the base and rebuilding the base at a lower depth. This was the only way to deal with Kibbe Street being... This level of the street was actually higher than the tree lawns and the sidewalk in many places. So, come fall, winter, spring, anyone trying to use portions of those sidewalk would be walking through water that had run off the street. This project is about 2.3 million. It is being funded with Public Works Funds, Ohio Public Works Commission Funds, block grant funds, stormwater funds, Ohio Health Funds, utility funds, and general funds. And the project is moving along. We now have the base course down between Pine Street up to a point east of Calumet, pretty much where Interstate Battery is. The sidewalks are in, and tomorrow they will be seeding, doing the final grade and seeding of the tree lawns. For that section, we are waiting then the contractor to come back. And we think in about two weeks, we will have the final driving course of that east... or, excuse me, the west section of this project complete. For those people wanting to use Kibbe Street for local access now, that is possible. That portion west with the base course down, they may use, but they should use with caution, because there are some catch basins and some water valves still sticking up, so you're driving at your own risk. But if people go slowly, they can access their destinations in that stage. West of the tracks... excuse me, east of the tracks out to Bell Fountain, that project, we have just milled. The contractor is now removing that base, rebuilding it. We do already have the storm drainage in that section. And the completion for that section by contract is October 30th. We're hoping that it doesn't run over. But with the rain days that we've experienced earlier in the season, it could potentially move a week, maybe even two weeks. But we are guaranteed that the project will be done by mid-November. Any questions?
Mr. President?
Okay. First off, it was Mrs. Miles, virtual floor. Do you have any questions, Mrs. Miles?
No, no, I'm fine.
Okay. Mrs. Adams? I'm sorry, but we're trying to follow up.
No, that's fine.
No, that's fine, no problem. Kibbie Street.
Yes.
I know we've talked, and you've mentioned some of this before. I'd like to make mention, not only did we have the reconstruction of Kibbie, but we also had the gas company contractor in, so our side streets were being impacted. So, I mean, that compounded the headaches and the delay and the frustration of the residents. Everyone is supportive of the Kibbie Street project, they're looking forward to it. It's just a shame when you step out of your house, you leave one way, when you come back, the gas contractor's there and has the street closed, and you can't come back the way you There's been issues with Kibbie Street on off-streets mainly, and I've talked to the chief and other officers of people shortcutting, what they call it, through CVS. We've had some near misses of pedestrians coming out of the store, of cars cutting through there. CVS is getting speed bumps, and they're going to install them. And with the shutting of Kibbie Street now at Bell Fountain, clear up there by the oil change, Bell Fountain has really been impacted with traffic and the truck semis coming out of that industry warehouse business coming down Collins. So, I, and because the one side is more business, I don't think it'll be as much of an impact, but those at Dana and Collins, those residents, they're seeing a lot coming from the industry part, cutting through. But there are still some issues with, and LPD's been patrolling CVS, I've seen where they've pulled cars over and have ticketed them. It's not, you know, they won't go to the turn signal, even though the city engineer has increased the time to allow, and we appreciate it, to allow more cars through there. They just see that opening and take it. And we have the construction of a new business on Bell Fountain. That is a street as well, or a cut-through, that is blocked off, so everything's on Bell Fountain right now. So it's, but our main impact has been the gas company contractors. I mean, every side street you could think you could take while the east, the west side of Kibbie construction was being done, was being compounded as well.
And if I may add, I think Mrs. Adams has made some good points. Two things we would like to remind the public. As you're driving in these areas, please try to approach with and exercise some patience and some consideration. Consideration for those people trying to get in and out of these areas. Mrs. Adams referred to the truck routes, the truckers trying to get to Industry have now been detoured down Collins and over to Kibbie and into Industry, which means there's going to be more left turns from westbound Bell Fountain on the Collins. It's much better if we just take a deep breath as vehicle drivers and give people an opportunity to get across and get to their destination, and it'll make us faster on our destination. And the last thing I want to emphasize is, keep in mind those businesses along Kibbie and Bell Fountain. If you patronize them in the past, go out of your way and spend a few more minutes to get there and continue to patronize them. The Meat Cities, the Interstate Batteries, the Dairy Isle, the industrial people along Kibbie and Industry Avenue, this is tough times for them. So, you know, if you're thinking about doing business and you can spend the time, they would appreciate your patronage.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
Howard, they're going to pave that, because I got a call saying they're not paving for another five or seven days. They don't, Kibbie Street, is that going to get paved in two weeks?
If you're referring to the area between Pine Street and the railroad tracks, that will be paved within the next two weeks, that is correct. But the, and again, what has to happen is, as I said, they are currently backfilling the tree lawns, they're grading and seeding those tree lawns, they will erect signage, they will do all the line stri, they won't do the line striping, but once they get the signage up, then they will pave, and then the last thing to do is the striping, and we can open up that stretch of street.
Did you know the paving people came, this one said to me, they came out there, they didn't have everything ready to go, that's why they didn't get to pave it, so they put them back, order back them up a little bit more.
No, this is what, this is how we order our construction, because we have found in the past, if you do the final surface of the street, and then you have all this excavation and filling of the tree lawn as such, you mar up the street and you shorten its life. So this is the order of things that we have been doing with all street reconstruction these last sixteen, eighteen years.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Your question just took it off.
I know, and just very briefly here, Mr. President, I would just like to offer condolences to the, to the young man that took his life here in our community. It really, really had an impact on me, because I have a heart for young people, and I work with young people long enough to know that they're going through some difficult time, they have some difficult times in their lives. And so I would, and I mentioned this before, that I, you know, for parents, grandparents, guardians, those of influence around teenagers, you know, to take the time to pay attention to these young people. A lot of them have faces on them that make it seem like they're fine, but they're not. Inside, a lot of them are dealing with a lot of things that we probably did not have to deal with when we were, when we were young, and then, and the social media has not helped things at all. And so I, again, would like to say to parents, grandparents, all those who have young people in there, it's just to, don't hesitate to ask those difficult questions. Sometimes we feel like we don't want to pry, and we don't want to invade their privacy, but my rule, my kids were home, as long as you were in my house, and I'm feeding you, and I'm providing the roof of your head, everything that you have, everything you do is up to scrutiny. And so I just, I just want to tell the parents, those who are here and those who are listening, take time with your kids. You know, for young people nowadays, love is spelled T-I-M-E, spending time with them. And we're so busy with our schedules and trying to move up in our careers, that sometimes our kids get left behind. And I just want to cite a couple more statistics here from the Allen County Health Assessment, and this is for Allen County. Eighteen percent of the youth that they surveyed, ages sixth grade to twelfth grade, eighteen seriously considered attempting suicide. Eight percent admitted that they had actually attempted a suicide in the past year, and of that three, and of that eight percent, three percent had tried more than once to kill themselves. And so just remember though, this is in our city, this is not in New York, Chicago, this is in, this is in Allen County. So again, when you see a young people, don't be so quick to judge them, you know, give them encouragement. You know, I know sometimes when you see the piercing on them, and you see the tattoos, you know, you want, you want to do everything but say something to them, but you never know what that kid is facing. You know, they may look like they're doing fine, but, you know, deep inside, a lot of them are hurting. And so, you know, just make, you know, even if you don't know the young people, the young person, smile at them. Give them a smile when you see them, and we just need to, as a community, because these are our future leaders. These are the kids that will grow up someday and hopefully be here running our city and being here on City Council. So we have to help them, you know, to be better mind, body, and soul. And so I, again, I would just say, you know, take the time, when you see a young person, to say something, encourage you to them, smile at them, or say something that will happen, because you never know what they're going through. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Miles. Mr. Gordon.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to take a minute to thank the people from downtown Lima who put on their latest production or commercial, I don't know how many people have gotten to see that. Myself with the Lima Warriors and Mr. Lowe with his drum corps, got to participate in the commercial, although my, I believe my wife paid them to cut me out of it, because I'm not, I'm not allowed to dance in public, and there's a good reason why I'm not allowed to dance in public. That production was really awesome, a lot of it took place right out here, out front, and man, if you haven't seen it yet, when you see it, I mean, I tell you what, you almost can't get the song out of your head. And so, you know, I just wanted to thank them for, I mean, that was just classy, classy production that they put on. And the only thing else is, I want to remind people to be good to each other. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Mr. McLean?
Thank you, Mr. President. Northside Neighborhood Association is, has a special project coming up on Saturday. We're looking for some volunteers, if anyone would like to help, give us a few hours. We're trying to take care of a family that they lost a father in the first ward. It's part of the Northside Neighborhood Association, they're going to paint a garage and paint some trim over on Erdle. If anyone is interested in giving a few hours on Saturday, you can call me at four one nine two three four six six five one. It's for a very good cause. We also have slated for some work on Make a Difference Day, we're just going to try to get a head start on some of the work. So if you can give me a few minutes of your time on Saturday, I'd greatly appreciate it. Secondly, Mr. President, you know, we always talk about quality of life, and you know, I brought up the area of Melrose and North Wald and Ashton and that whole area, because it seems like it's a racetrack. And I've been talking with the neighborhood for some time, and one of the neighbors brought me a petition, and I'd like to present this to you, so you can give this to the Traffic Commission, because I'm making a motion to study that area, change the stop signs, do put site stop signs in, whatever we can do to slow some of this traffic down. I explained to her that I would present that tonight. This is signed by neighbors all around her. Quality of life is very important to them, there's a bunch of new people in the neighborhood with young kids, and the traffic is horrendous. So, they're looking for a stop sign on Ashton or Melrose and North Wald, one of the, or switch the signs around. We have to do something, because there's been so many near misses, you don't get that many people sign a petition for a stop sign if there wasn't. So I made a motion that we present that to the Traffic Commission.
Make your motion to receive and file the petition and refer it to the Traffic Commission, please.
I made a motion that we receive and file the petition from Mrs. Wilkerson and forward it to the Traffic Commission for the study.
Motion the second is to receive and file the petition from Mrs. Wilkerson and refer it to the Traffic Commission for study of improved traffic control devices in the area stated. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you. And one more word. Mrs. Miles, I thank you for... That family was a very good friend of mine. I spent the weekend with them, all last week with, my wife was with them. That was a good kid. I mean, he had tables of trophies, tables after tables of ribbons from swimming. You know, it, being together with your kids, there's just, sometimes there's something different with them, you know? And I don't know that they could have done one thing different. God had a special mission for him, and that mission was not here in the Lord, owner, they took him early to give it somewhere else, his soul to someone else. There's more to it than what we see, because I know those people very well, and I know that they spent the time, and they spent a lot of effort to make sure that that family was together and did things together, from hunting ducks to swimming meets to soccer matches to whatever, they were together. And you know, in that funeral, you saw it by the community. That community came together because they knew. That was one of the largest funerals I've ever been to, and I really appreciate your kind words for them, but I don't know why, and I don't think we ever will. And I just wish that family, they're always going to be in my prayers, and they're always going to be in my thoughts. And for everyone out there, she said the right words, concentrate on the young, because they're our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. I don't have anything this evening, my issue was kind of piggybacked on Mrs. Miles' question, so, Mr. Tevin?
Our next meeting is the twelfth.
Correct. Okay.
Mr. President, I move that Lima City Council adjourn until October twelfth at seven p.m. in these chambers.
Second. The motion the second is that Lima City Council will adjourn until October twelfth in these chambers at seven p.m. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries, and we are adjourned.